You know, vendor or one of our partners might come in and say, I want to evaluate with disaggregated data or non-disaggregated data. I want to evaluate how we're doing or if our efforts are making a difference. And that's just a typical process that works through Scott's office. And I think that's a much different thing and not something that would necessarily require a contract because it's something that we do with many different partners on a very regular basis.
So who's paying for that time?
Could you clarify?
Well, because if I'm a public person, I ask you, I remember as a board member, if anything took over two hours, it was a struggle. But if I'm a public person or KATV or whoever asks for information, if it's over a certain amount, we send them a bill. So are we doing the same for all the contractors?
Well, I can tell you specifically with Tara Luna, to answer your first question, no. To elaborate upon it, the data provided to Tara Luna to this point, the vast majority of it has been largely publicly available and all at an aggregate level. And none of the requests that we've provided or answered have taken anywhere near four hours to complete.
I know it isn't always four hours, but there's usually a combination. So if we're getting multiple requests from the same vendor, on top of that, you're getting multiple requests from student assignment plan, everybody else from the board and staff. I'm very conscientious of, we make the public pay for it, we should have vendors pay for it who are using our data in the same aspect. But Ms. Neelis Bresch, you said that there are situations where they're interacting with our staff and students and we don't have a contract. That's a liability question we should probably have a conversation about. And I don't think that's appropriate to have a legal conversation publicly because we're inviting potential lawsuits if we don't have a contract. So there are numerous questions that, I mean, I guess we can ask, but I would, I'm not the council's attorney, but I'm definitely not one who says that we should have it in public if we're talking about legal issues.
Okay, I'll look to Mrs. Neelis Bresch to respond to whether it should be a public conversation or how you want to handle it.
You know, I have given, you know, generally speaking, you know, as I understand it, you asked for it to be part of the agenda. And so, you know, that's why the agenda item was placed on as part of the public conversation to discuss that process. If you want to discuss whether or not a contract is necessary, and we can certainly do that in closed session, Mr. Wayne, as far as my legal advice to that. But with any relationship that is involved in the district, I would recommend, generally speaking, that we have a contractual relationship. It protects both parties and it's in the best interest of the district. Obviously, that costs additional legal fees and this is a relationship that is longstanding, something that has been with the district for many, many years. And it predates, I think, most of these people, most of us in the room. And so it's just something that is part of that practice. But there are also a lot of research requests. And so there, you know, depending on what your question is, I think we get research requests regularly. We also get public requests for information regularly from the same people multiple times. And if each request is less than four hours, it's something we typically comply. They're not just vendors that ask for that information. There are students, there are people filling out their graduate information. And so it just kind of depends related to, you know, whether or not I'd advise that we have a contract in those situations. I think that's something that probably does not rise to level that I would recommend a contract for the district.
If I can, I would offer that through our research review process, we do ensure a number of provisions that could be contemplated in the contract as well, including the safeguarding of student data. In the rare instance that entity wants to interact with students in particular, we have requirements for them going through our internal HR processes for background screening. We generally, as a rule, request that parent consent, active consent is given. Parents are informed that interviews or whatever is going to be taking place with their student. Additionally, we require a staff member to be present in that room for an instance where an interview would occur, such that if those things that parents were informed on their consent form, if it deviates from that topic or any of the topics that are within, that the interview or discussion is stopped immediately. So safeguarding student data, anonymity of responses, all of those components I think would make for good fodder in a contract, as well as are currently present in our research review process, and those expectations are made.
And didn't this all stem from the fact that there was some research done in which parents didn't consent? At least that's where the inquiries came from.
I guess it would be moving of who asked for the item to suggest how it emanated. I can't speak to any kind of process where parents were not consented. I can tell you that if we're talking about Minnesota Humanities in particular, there was one project at one school and consent was absolutely required and active consent was required, which is to say, parents get a form, read the form and sign it. And those were all collected and only were interviews allowed when the consent was provided.
So what was the survey done at South High School last year?
You'll have to be more specific.
There was a survey, well, we've had multiple, we've had multiple emails from board members dating back to last year. And I guess I'll ask Ms. Ray to help clarify the exact survey because I can't pull up my email. It says I can't be reached right now.
I believe you were referring to the ACEs survey, maybe?
Yes. Was that part of all of this?
No, it was not. I did speak with Mr. Conno on that survey at the beginning of this year, as well as with Dr. Cohen, and we have addressed those concerns.
And but was the survey completed with the ACEs survey without parents? This is not anything to do with this, but we keep hearing about mixes and matches. So we're public, so it'd be good to clarify that right now with.
I guess that's, I mean, that's probably not the agenda item. So that's probably a separate, because it doesn't have anything to do, is that right, with Minnesota Humanities? Is that correct?
No, it doesn't. It's not a process I reviewed or went through office.
And it doesn't have anything to do with Tara Luna?
No.
They didn't use that data?
I have no information suggesting they did. I've spoken with Mr. Conno on the topic numerous times. He's never mentioned Tara Luna associated with it at all. Honestly, I have no understanding of association there.
I'm okay with that. I'm good with that because that's what's, it's been floating around on social media, so I'm glad we're having this conversation.
Sure.
But we do need to talk about the liability in that piece, though. So I don't know how you want to do that. But if we have anybody entering into our schools or working with our staff, whether it's on a volunteer basis or incentive basis or mandatory basis, we should have some outlines of what is expected in some contractual form.
Yeah, we can discuss that in closed session, Mr. Wayne.
Okay, great. Does anyone else have any other questions on that topic? All right. If not, we're going to move on to J1E Series 5000 Students, Part Two. Mr. Ray.
Thank you very much. This is the last section of the complete policy review of all the series. This is Part Two of the 5000 series. You approved Part One today. I did provide hard copies August 15th. I think they were blue, if that rings a bell to anybody. One change that has happened since that hard copy was provided and it is reflected on the Agenda Day is the removal of 5415, which I did provide you in hard copies, was the anti-bullying policy. The current policy was updated, so there was not a need to update it again. So in front of you is the next batch and the final batch with the inclusion of the concussion policy as well, 6283. So after we review, the second reading or the second reading is approved, we will move on to do a kind of a match of the previous policies and the current policies to make sure that we're up to date on anything that we may have missed. So in front of you is the first reading of the Series 5000 Part Two policies.
I just want to confirm that board members have had an opportunity to look and if you have any questions, and if you do, before it comes back as first reading next time, which is in a week and a half, if you could just, if you see anything that you missed before, would you please share that with Mr. Ray so that he can make any changes necessary and get that out to board members as soon as possible? Ms. Merrick.
I do have one question related to Policy 5601, the asthma and allergic reaction protocol. Just because I'm sure we've all seen reference in the news to the issues with EpiPen and drug pricing, because we do specifically reference EpiPen. And there's going to be a generic one coming out. And there are also people who are, instead of getting the EpiPen, getting a vial of epinephrine and learning how to do the actual injection. So I don't know if we want to somehow word it related to that instead of specifically saying EpiPen, just so we're not having to come back in a few months and change this again.
I will follow up with Health Services on the wording of that.
Great, thanks. Mr. Scanlon.
In the, I guess, looking at the Policy 5506, it deals with the Safe Pupil Transportation Plan. Obviously, since transportation is in the, is in everybody's main target, what does this policy, is this for all Omaha Public Schools students or is this for students that are trans, that are provided transportation from Omaha Public Schools, transportation through our transportation department?
Sorry. I did have a conversation with Mr. Salas about that when we were reviewing these and we discussed the implementation on STA buses as well, but I will follow up with him as well.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other? All right, great. So I just encourage everyone to make sure you're comfortable with these policies and then get back to Mr. Ray next time, before next time. With that, we're going to move on to J2 Action Items. So the first item is J2A, Approval of Douglas County School District 0001, 2016-17 Budgets, Which Do Not Require a Tax Levy. And maybe if, I know there's four agenda items here and I guess, Mrs. Kenoke, a few, or there's actually more than four, but do you want to answer all questions at one time?
I'm going to do the budget presentation.
Can you tell us where that is located so we can all find it quickly?
It's actually on the item, not the resolutions. So it was, it's under where it says Action Items, J2. It's attached to J2.
Okay, J2?
Yes.
There you go. All right, great. Thank you, Mrs. Kenoke.
Okay, I'd like to present to you our budget for 2016-17, our proposed budget for your review. For the agenda, I'm going to go over the budget calendar and then talk about the revenue information, look at our assessed valuation projections and what we've received from the county, review the state aid information, look at the expenditures, the proposed increases and proposed reductions, and then the cash flow. And then also talk about any questions that you may have about it. So I'm going to talk about the school district's budget to begin with. And we had a budget workshop on July 18th. And then we were certified our property tax valuations on August 20th. And we were certified our levy proceeds from the learning community on September 1st. And we also published the notice of budget hearing on September 1st. We're required to publish notice of our budget hearing five days prior to the date of the hearing, which is today. And then we are hoping to adopt the budget this evening. And we are required by the state statute to file our adopted budget with the county and with the Department of Education and the State Auditor's Office by September 20th. And before we talk about the budget for this year, I wanted to highlight what happened in 2015-16. And in 2015-16, we had a total general fund budget of $557 million. And that was just for our general fund. Our total budget for the whole district was $802,601. And our levy last year was $1.22, and that was using the bond issue that we had as well. We had our first tranche of the bond issue at that time and our total levy was the $1,22975. So then when you move forward to this year, our total budget for the whole district is $897 million. And that includes the second issue of the bond, the second tranche of the bond issue. And so we go from a general fund or a total levy for the district of $1.22 up to $1.24. So it was an increase of two cents in our total levy. So when we do the development of the budget, we start staffing conferences in January and we meet with the principals in the buildings to talk about what their staffing needs are and what needs to be done at the buildings. We have projections of what the student population's going to be. And then we have, we know what our state aid is. It's certified on or before March 1st, so we start to get an idea of what our revenues are going to be for the year. We project what our valuations is going to be. And then we start building the budget. And we always prioritize staffing at the buildings when we develop the budget. And then we also continue to monitor our fixed costs like our insurance, utilities, fuel, things like that. And then we also have continuing conversations about the need for textbooks and technology and professional development and improvements to facilities. So there's always, there's unlimited needs for a school district. So we're trying to balance all that when we're looking at the budget for the coming year. So after we've put together the budget, we have a total increase from last year to this year of 4.45%. And that's about a $25 million increase in our budget. Okay, so we have our preliminary expenditures summary of what's happening in each of the divisions to add up to the $25 million increase. We did have 24 elementary schools that lost sixth grade. And then four of our middle schools had sixth grade added to them. So there was movement within the buildings on staffing. And then we also had changes within the departments as well. So that total added up to be the 24.8 million dollars. So as I said before, our 15-16 budget of expenditures for the general fund was 557 million. We had a 25 million or a $24.8 million increase, and that brought it up to $582 million, which accounts for our 4.45% increase. So our parameters when we were developing the budget were that we estimated that there would be a three and a half percent increase in salaries. The valuation for the learning community, it came out to be a 3.89% increase. And the valuation for OPS ended up being a 1.27% increase. This is the last year of the Learning Community Common Levy for the general fund, which is the 95 cents. And then we can levy as a district on top of that an additional 10 cents for the maximum of the dollar five. So part of the increase that we had to account for in the budget this year was the teacher's And we have a three-year contract for the teachers. So for 16-17, it ended up being a 3.3% increase for the teachers. Next year, it's going to be a 5.5% increase. So as we're developing the budget for this year, we have to be mindful of what's going to be happening next year as well. So 80% of the expenditures that we have are for salary and benefits. And 14% of our expenditures are for contracted services. The district, we have approximately 52,000 students. Our total staff is approximately 7,000 in total staff. And for our teaching staff or certificated staff, there's about 4,284 teachers. Our student-teacher ratio is one, for the elementary is 1 to 15, and for the secondary is 1 to 17. And this year, we're going to have 74% free and reduced lunch students. So we have a summary of our expenditures, the increases that they had for the salaries and the benefits and our services. So overall, it was a $25 million increase, which ended up being 4.45%. So the revenue to support the operations comes from property taxes, state aid, other local, which includes fines and licenses, motor vehicle tax, car line tax, and then federal sources. So to show you what's been happening with our general fund budget of expenditures over time, they've been ranging around 4%, something like that. So this year, we went up slightly from last year, but that, again, that's because of our continued three-year negotiated agreement for the teachers. That's causing some of this increase. So property taxes make up 45% of our revenue that we receive. And state aid makes up about 39% of our revenue. So significant portion of our revenue coming in does come from the state aid and from property tax. The fund balance is, our unrestricted fund balance is monies that we don't have obligated to another purpose. So it's unobligated funds and it's as a percentage of our total budget of expenditures. So we're required by law to have a fund balance between 5 and 15%. And we dipped below 10% a couple of years ago, and now we've been able to bring that back up. And what that does is it helps us when we do our next tranche for the bond issue. If we have a higher fund balance, that'll help us on the interest rates that we have when we have the bond issued. So this year, we're going to try to maintain the same fund balance at about 12% of, for unrestricted fund balance for 2016 is what our goal is. So this is showing you in 15-16 what our tax asking was compared to what it is in 16-17, showing the increases that we had. And again, we went from $1.22975 up to $1.24.03. So there has been a two cent increase in our total levy. So we've had requests from the board to tie the budget to the strategic plan. And what I asked some of the departments to do is to put together how they feel that their department's budget aligns to the strategic plan. And so we have different ways that people were showing that. And it was my understanding after talking to the board that it was okay to have something different from each department so that they could just kind of explain on their own how they are tying to the strategic plan. So we do have Open Book up and running now, and it has the proposed budget for 16-17 on the website. And then we also have on the website the link for the strategic plan. And it's kind of a work in progress right now. We just have, I think, five departments that have done the strategic plan, tying the budget to the strategic plan. So in the next month or two, we're going to be working with the rest of the divisions to ask them to show how they are tying to the budget and the strategic plan. So to get to the Open Book, you go to the district's website and then you, in search OPS, you type in Open Book, and then it takes you to those links. But you can drill down in Open Book and look at what each department is spending on salaries, benefits and whatever. So it's a really great place to get some information and it's up and running and looks That is all I have for the general fund budget of the district or the operating budget for the OPS school district. I'd be happy to answer any questions or if you want me to finish with the ESU, I can do that as well.
Go ahead, Mr. Scanlon.
I guess, can you go back to slide number 15?
Okay.
Or I guess it's numbered 15, 17 of 25, just so I can understand this correctly. Did our proposed tax levy actually go down for our general fund?
Well, see, with the, with this publication, you know, with the common levy for the learning community, we have 95 cents with the learning community, and then we could go 10 cents above that for OPS. So yeah, for our portion of the general fund, it did go down. You're right.
And then the bonds, the bond fund, that actually went up?
Three cents.
Three cents?
No, two cents.
About two cents, okay. So that's where, that's where that difference between this year and last year is, we actually went down in one fund, but due to the fact that we're doing the bond, it went slightly up this year.
Right, yeah. That's, yeah, that's what happened. And the state requires, when we file the budget document, we have to show what the levy was the year before compared to what it is this year because taxpayers, sometimes, you know, you don't remember what it was the year before. And so it's good to have a side-by-side comparison to see what is actually happening with the district.
Okay, thank you.
I guess since you're on the general fund piece, can you share with us, because I know you had discussed before, there's been the discussion about the property tax increase for certain parts of the city and a decrease for other parts. Did you factor that in? I know before you had said you did not. Is that correct?
Yeah, when we did the preliminary budget that we talked about with you before, we did not use the increased value that some were anticipating that was going throughout the city. And in fact, our value didn't go up as high as what we had, we had been thinking it might. It was supposed to go up like 6% or 8%. And we were just using a lower valuation increase so that we wouldn't have to make a lot of reductions if that became necessary. So our total value went up, I think it was the, I forget about that, 1.2, let's see. Yeah, 1.27%. So it really didn't increase that much. And if there are appeals that are filed on property, we would end up having to pay that back. And so we have to account for a little bit of that happening because it happens every year with valuations that sometimes we have to pay back some of the taxes. So we do take that into account when we do our budget.
Great, thanks. Okay, are there any other questions on the general budget?
Could that be part of this one?
Ms. Merrick?
Okay. I know you were not at the meeting last Monday.
I watched it.
I watched, like a lot of people did. But there were, there were a lot of budget numbers going around.
Yes.
Related to transportation and how transportation is budgeted. And I was just wondering if you could provide some information and clarification to the board on how the budget for transportation is set and if that's based on the number of buses we start with at the year or if there's factors taken into consideration? Knowing that we usually drop off as the year goes around, like how are we budgeting that? So is there a surplus of extra money because we've decreased bus routes early or not?
There may be extra money, but we won't know that till the end of the year. When we do our budgeting, we don't, we get an estimate from Travis on how many routes we're going to have. And like he indicated, you start with what you ended with the year before. And then he thought there would be an additional 22 routes added to that. And then I got confused on the ones that we were doing and the ones that Chief was doing and all of that. But we do take that into consideration, but we don't budget for the entire amount because we know that the routes go down throughout the year. So we're actually looking at historically what it's been. Are we meeting that? When you do a budget, you don't want to, you don't want to underestimate what you're going to be spending because then you end up in trouble at the end of the year. You always want to be able to cover all of your. You always want to be able to cover all of your expenses. So we look at what they've been spending previously, and then take into consideration what they think it's going to be increasing, because they were thinking there'd be additional routes added because of the walk zone had been decreased. So we took that into consideration. Also, for schools, they pay for busing for activities and also for field trips. So you have a budget that's in there, but then we need to also consider those type of expenditures as well. And those are generally about $3.5 million or something added on to that. So the estimate that we have in the budget document for transportation is $26 million, 26,775. And, you know, when Mr. Wayne was doing his calculations, he thought there'd be about $2.2 million savings or something from the routes. But that's not considering that we have to pay about $3.5 million for activities and also field trips and things like that. So we do take that into consideration. Every time we budget, we try to hit the number as close as we can. That's why we do the staffing conferences. That's why we talk to the departments to see what they want to spend. So we're getting as close of an estimate as we can. And we know that the routes change and that there's going to be differences, but that is taken into consideration when we prepare the budget.
Okay, one more, Ms. Merrick.
Sorry, I'm not done. I know with the OSERS legislation that was passed last year, we may have an ARC extra required contribution?
Yes.
Would that come out of our unrestricted fund balance, or is there money budgeted separately in case we are presented with the required contribution?
It would likely come out of our unrestricted fund balance. And so then that would bring it down. We still wouldn't hit the 5%, but we have, we budgeted for planned obsolescence in the general fund, and that's to replace the computers and to get that going. And there's, we're self-funded on our insurance. We've got people that need to be, you know, staffing requests that happen throughout the year. So we try to, you know, leave enough, you know, leeway that we can cover some of those type of expenditures. But I don't know what to expect with the ARC, and hopefully it won't come to pass, but we'll see. And we've tried to take that into consideration.
Great, thank you. I only have one other question if no one else has questions. That is, in Open Book, can you put the actuals in there at some point for this past year so that we can see how close were we to budget, between budget and actual on the different components? I know Mr. Dixon's talked about it.
Yeah, we'll be able to put that out there as well. And then it would be nice to compare them side-by-side to see what the differences are, so.
That would be great. So if you could just let us know when that gets done? I'm assuming we need to get through the audit and all that kind of stuff. Okay, go ahead and go on.
Okay, I'll move on to the ESU. We're limited in the ESU budget to a penny and a half. So the budget that we've developed for this next year levies a penny and a half based on our current valuation. That had increased 1.27% from last year to this year. This is what we had adopted last year for the educational service unit. Our total expenditures for the ESU were $23 million. And this year, they're about the same. In fact, they're just slightly less than it was last year. This year, it's going to be $21 million for our total. I can't see that. And the levy will be a penny and a half. These are the expenditures that we have for the ESU, just a summary of them. And like I said, it's decreasing slightly. It's going down by $81,000 from last year to this year. So what was different that happened last year is that we spent down some of the fund balance, and we're not doing that this year. We're leaving the fund balance where it's at, and then just paying for all of the expenditures with our levy for the penny and a half. So our expenditures last year were 23 million, 550. Then we had a slight decrease, so actually, the budget stayed about the same from last year to this year. And this is where I was talking about the $2.5 million that we spent down in the cash balance last year. And we're not doing that this year. Our property taxes went up slightly, the 1.27% in the valuation. And we are, the interlocal agreement is between OPS and the ESU, and we have, that went up slightly from the year before. But our ESU revenues do equal our expenditures to get it to be a balanced budget. And I think that's it on the ESU.
Do any board members have questions? Mr. Scanlon?
This slide, where you have other local, why is there such a big discrepancy from 1516 to 1617?
For the interlocal agreement, we had to remember.
Not, I guess, not the interlocal on the other local?
Oh, other local.
Yeah.
That's because of how we were showing the, I don't, Christie, do you have?
We have a Print and Pub interlocal where the Print and Pub runs through, oh, no.
It's other, other local taxes.
Right, but we have an interlocal. And this year, well, and how it should be calculated is it goes up into the other local rather than the interlocal. So there's just a difference at the Print and Pub by like $2 million, $2 million.
So you're saying you moved other local?
Yes.
Down to interlocal?
Correct. And that's why. And that's what the difference is, the two, if we had the, the Print and Pub is
So you're just more accurately reflecting what it?
Where it should hit.
Where it should be versus, so it's just a reclassification, not an adjustment? Does that make sense? And, and interlocal also went up a little bit more than that even.
Had we not been showing that correctly in past budgets?
This last budget, we didn't show it correctly. So we're fixing it this time to make it look the way it should be.
So in next year's budget, we can expect it to reflect more of, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? All right, if not, turn to Ms. Merrick is going to make a motion.
I move to adopt the resolution before you to approve the 2016, 2017 non-levy budgets for Douglas County School District 0001, which includes the following. School lunch, $46,020,531. School activities, $6,500,000. Central stores, $5,500,000. Depreciation, $6 million. Employee benefit, $11,170,000. Student fees, $800,000. Contingency, $10,100,000. Prior service retirement, $145,000.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
So a motion by Ms. Merrick and second by Mr. Scanlon to approve the budget that is, to adopt the resolution before us for the 201617 non-levy budgets for Douglas County School District 001, which include the amount she stated. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Vargas.
Aye.
Wayne. Fay.
Aye.
Gadding.
Aye.
Merrick.
Aye.
Scanlon.
Aye.
Bye-bye.
Motion carries.
I move to adopt the resolution before you to approve the 2016, 2017 Douglas County School District 0001 budgets, which require a tax levy excluding the general fund as follows. Bond fund, $71,508,140. Special building fund, $237,703,009. Qualified capital purpose undertaking fund, $6,424,449.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. I just lost my place. Motion by Ms. Merrick, second by Mr. Scanlon to adopt the resolution before us to approve the 201617 Douglas County School District 001 budgets, which require a tax levy excluding the general fund, as stated. Are there any questions or comments? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Wayne. Fay.
Aye.
Gadding.
Aye.
Merrick.
Aye.
Scanlon.
Aye.
Vargas.
Aye.
Bye-bye.
Motion carries.
I move to adopt the resolution before you to approve the 2016, 2017 general fund local budget in the amount of $582,72,902, and a reimbursable grant budget in the amount of $88,134,232, for a total general fund budget of $670,207,134.
Is there a second?
Second.
So motion by Ms. Merrick, second by Mr. Scanlon to adopt the resolution before us to approve a 201617 general fund local budget in the amount of $582,72,902, and a reimbursable grant budget in the amount of $88,134,232, for a total general fund budget of $670,207,134. Is there any comments or questions? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Gadding.
Aye.
Merrick.
Aye.
Scanlon.
Aye.
Vargas.
Aye.
Wayne. Fay.
Aye.
Bye-bye.
Motion carries. J2E.
I move to adopt the resolution before you to approve the 2016, 2017 ESU number 19 budget of $23,469,256.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Merrick, second by Mr. Scanlon to adopt the resolution before us to approve the 2016, 2017 ESU number 19 budget of $23,469,256. Is there any questions or comments? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Merrick.
Aye.
Scanlon.
Aye.
Vargas.
Aye.
Wayne. Fay.
Aye.
Gadding.
Aye.
Bye-bye.
Motion carries. J2E.
I move to adopt the resolution before you to set the 2016, 2017 Douglas County School District 0001 property tax requests as follows. General fund, $23,360,98. Special building fund, zero. Qualified capital purpose undertaking fund, $5,235,149. Bond fund, $30,823,206, for a total property tax requirement of $59,000, sorry, $59,418,453.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Merrick, second by Mr. Scanlon to adopt the resolution before us to set the 201617 Douglas County School District 0001 property tax request as follows. General fund, $23,360,98. Special building fund, zero. Qualified capital purpose undertaking fund, $5,235,149. Bond fund, $30,823,206, for a total property tax requirement of $59,418,453. Is there any questions or comments? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Scanlon.
Aye.
Vargas.
Aye.
Wayne. Fay.
Aye.
Gadding.
Aye.
Merrick.
Aye.
Bye-bye.
J2F.
I move to adopt the resolution before you to set the 2016, 2017 ESU number 19 property tax request at $3,031,285.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Merrick, second by Mr. Scanlon to adopt the resolution before us to set the 2016, 2017 ESU number 19 property tax request at $3,031,285. Is there any questions or comments? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Vargas.
Aye.
Wayne. Fay.
Aye.
Gadding.
Aye.
Merrick.
Aye.
Scanlon.
Aye.
Bye-bye.
Motion carries. With that, Ms. Merrick.
I move that the Board of Education go into closed session for the protection of the public interest and for the prevention of needless injury to the reputation of individuals and to discuss with the Superintendent, Secretary to the Board, Dr. Turnquist, and legal counsel, personnel, pending litigation, negotiations, and legal advice.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Merrick, second by Mr. Vargas. Roll call, please.
Wayne. Fay.
Aye.
Gadding.
Aye.
Merrick.
Aye.
Scanlon.
Aye.
Vargas.
Aye.
Bye-bye.
Motion carries. Let me remind the board that the purpose for closed session is for the protection of the public interest and for the prevention of needless injury to the reputation of individuals to discuss with the Superintendent, Secretary to the Board, Dr. Turnquist, and legal counsel, personnel, pending litigation, negotiations, and legal advice. Let the record reflect that the board went into closed session at 10:15 PM.